All right, welcome back for our truncated afternoon session today. And we start with a public school choice appeal, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Dedman.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Dedman for the department. We have here an appeal under the Public School Choice Act of 2015 which allows students to attend a district in which they do not reside. If the application is timely submitted and has been denied, the party may appeal to the state board, and that is why we have a party here today. There are a few limitations contained in the act. If the school choice law, the provisions of the school choice law conflict with the enforcement of a current, an active desegregation order or desegregation plan approved by the court, that would be a limitation. The district does have to submit proof that it is an active enforceable plan for that to apply. The law does set a three percent net maximum limit on school choice transfers every year from a district, and a district can claim a lack of capacity, but only if the school district has reached at least ninety percent of the maximum authorized student population in a program, a class, a grade level, or a school building. The matter before us today is the matter of the Smith family. We have Brad and Amy Smith here with us today, and they have submitted the items in your packet. We also have here for the non-resident district, we have Jace Roberts, and we have Superintendent Larry Newsom for the resident district. All the parties must be sworn. You'll hear first from the non-resident district, they'll have five minutes to give an introduction, and then the parents may also give a five-minute introduction. Each side will have twenty minutes to present their case, and the board may allow up to five minutes for rebuttal.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So I would ask anyone who's not an attorney to please, who plans to testify, to please stand and raise a right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great, and so we will start with the non-resident district, up to five minutes, but then you will have much more time later if you wish.
I think I had those districts backwards. I'm actually Superintendent Larry Newsom from Washtata School District. Of course, we had the school choice application that was turned in to the Malvern School District. Of course, Malvern has denied the school choice based on the three percent cap. The only thing that I can say with this case is that we have sent the parents the letter stating that we had to deny based on Malvern reaching the three percent cap by the school choice law, and, you know, we told them, we're glad to take the students, it's just that the law's not that written that way. So that's basically my portion, thank you.
And you're from Malvern, right?
Yes.
Okay, and we normally kind of can join those two things together, so should we wait for Malvern until the twenty minutes, or should we?
We normally hear from the non-resident district first, and that's it, but...
This always gets confusing in terms of what we do with the resident district.
The board would like to know if they can receive an introduction from the resident district as well as the non-resident district in the introduction time period. The rules don't address it. The hearing procedures do not address it.
Okay.
You see, why not?
Well, we'll wait to hear from Malvern in the twenty minutes if that's appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll turn it over to y'all to spend your five minutes, and then you'll have twenty minutes later on if you wish. And the board has, of course, gotten all your written material as well.
Yes, sir. I'm Brad Smith, this is my wife, Amy Smith. We're both originally from Arkansas, she was from Plowton, and I'm originally from Malvern. We've been out of state for the past seven years with my job with FedEx and Louisiana and Mississippi, and just currently, as of July, moved back into the area and moved to family property in question down on Saginawide Road. So that's kind of our story, our background. The reason we're here is obviously to try to get our child in the best educational and social situation that we can, based on the move, so I guess we'll save everything else for the next twenty minutes.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you all so much for being here. All right, so we'll turn it back to you. Sounds like you have said all you have to say, so I think it probably is, can we go ahead and hear Malvern's explanation at this point? Okay, so I think that's what makes the most sense at this point.
I have a whole lot to say, so I think twenty minutes should be plenty, more than I'll need, actually, but this is a case of a cap issue. We reached our cap. The cap this year was fifty-nine, and we had eleven transfers in, so that cap got up to seventy. Obviously, there are reasons for that cap. The reasons, you know, the legislature put that cap in in terms of staffing issues from our end, you know, we uniformly enforced that cap because from our end, if we were to make one exception, you know, what is our role in, you know, it doesn't work real well on our end that way. So obviously, we, you know, the cap has been reached, this was after the cap, you know, I'm here to answer any questions you guys have.
All right, I think we'll probably be getting back to you with some questions in a bit, okay? All right, we'll turn it back to y'all for whatever additional details you'd like to add.
Obviously, my wife submitted a letter with you guys have. I guess I'd just like an opportunity to highlight the areas that we feel like are most important and the primary reason that we're here today. In terms of moving into the area and this disruption from her routine coming from Mississippi back into Arkansas, she's already made friends with the people that live on our road, and all six of the children that live on our road attend the Washtata School District. And so therefore, our preference, if possible, would be for her to obviously attend school with the children that she's going to live next door to whenever that starts. So from a social standpoint, I'm concerned about that aspect of it and trying to make that transition as smooth as possible. Another aspect, and I maybe Mr. Roberts can explain the cap a little bit better, I know there's a three percent cap that was met, he said it was after the cap, I'm not real sure how that works in terms of we submitted our application timely, is there a line, or is there, how does that, we're not sure how that piece fits together. Also, something had been said to us at some point about if the cap was full this year, then you could potentially move next year, and that further, for me and my wife, creates concern that we've already moved her from one place to another and then for one year and then move her again next year, that creates more instability and more issues in terms of the child. So secondly, and as a Malvern grad, you can paraphrase all this, but the educational opportunity we feel like is better at Washtata based on the state scores and the rankings. To my understanding, Malvern is a family school district, and we'd like to have our child in a successful school district. So from an educational standpoint, there is some concern there. Also, distance, we're two miles away from the Washtata school versus nine plus away from Malvern school, and so for a person that has to get up at five in the morning to go to work, my wife will be in charge of our three and our five-year-old in terms of getting them up, getting them ready, the burden, not only financially, but just on her, to make that happen would be much less if we could attend the Washtata School District with a shorter distance, shorter commute. And I guess lastly, my son Drew, who's three, he's already been accepted into the pre-K at Washtata, which I understand doesn't have a cap requirement and so forth. We've already been there, he's already enrolled, we've met the teacher. It's not feasible if you guys decided today not to allow her to go to Washtata, it's not feasible for us to have him go to Washtata and her go to Malvern, so we were basically with school starting, I believe Monday, have to sort out his situation too in terms of pre-K and get him enrolled and square that all up, so that's somewhat disruptive for him in this process as well. I guess in all principle and law, I'm sure, I understand the three percent cap, and I would just say that I'm not sure in terms of a cap if this situation meets, the cap meets the best outcome for my children in this case. Ultimately, that's up to you guys to decide, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. So we have five minutes now, and obviously anything that Washtata would like to add, but it sounded like most of the questions were more Malvern oriented, so whichever of y'all would like to kind of talk about, do you have any, would you like to respond to any of the issues that were raised?
I noticed a few things. You know, I've spoken with the parents, and you know, obviously you guys know this, but the way we have to do the cap, we received the applications, as we received them, the parents have until May first, obviously, to get those to us. It actually takes usually until June for us to sort through that, to figure out where our cap number is, because there are siblings and/or students that might have been denied the year before, as long as they get it in by May one, they get that preference the next year. So really, we can't sort out the actual, where that cap date is going to hit until June, normally, as we get all those. Again, like I said, we take those in a strict one, two, three, four, five, six order as we get them, you know, I emphasize, you know, the reasons are for the, there are reasons for the cap, and one of those were, you know, instituted, you know, I'm here to answer any questions I can on that.
So I'm going to go around, I know probably a variety of folks are going to have questions. I'll start, Dr. Moore, do you have questions?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Edman?
This is point of clarification, not just Malvern, but in general, and Ms. Dedman may need to refresh me on this, is the three percent, the total number of kids leaving you, or the three percent each year, the number would change? For example, if you had a hundred kids the first year, you could let three of them leave, and the next year you had ninety-seven, it's three percent every year is figured, yes? And can you tell me what your total enrollment is and what your three percent number is for the seventeen, for the eighteen, nineteen?
For the last year, the three percent number was fifty-nine, and I think I said earlier, I believe we had eleven school choice ends, and if you have a school choice end, that bumps the number up one, which that bumps us up to seventy, and that was our number from last year as given by the AD, based on our three percent from the prior year of the October fifteenth day.
Okay, and do you have any that have a choice end this year?
Eleven, yes ma'am.
Oh, that's the eleven.
That's eleven. Fifty-nine was the original cap, and then once we had those eleven transfer in, that bumps the cap up to seventy. It goes back to where I said earlier, it's difficult for us to, if we do reach our cap, when we reach that cap, it usually takes till about June to get all that sorted out.
So fifty-nine would have been how many kids you could have let go, but because you got eleven in, now you can let seventy kids go?
Yes, ma'am.
I had to put it, thank you.
And so how many total requests did you get, and where in the, do you know where in the list this family was with their requests?
I don't have it, I mean, I can't tell exactly where they were, I can tell they weren't the next family, but past that, it gets tricky, like I said, with siblings.
Siblings, yeah.
And the way I have to do it in order to make that work on my spreadsheet, it's very difficult to tell that. We had approximately a hundred and fifteen school choice applications this year. You know, one, you know, school choice has had a regulatory effect for us, over ninety percent of our school choice students each year are Caucasian students, and that is another reason why we don't, you know, once we get to the cap, we, you know, stick to the cap number at that point, because you get into, you know, different issues there.
But, so there was some gap between the number seventy and this family?
They were not seventy-one, I did not look beyond that.
Okay.
Let me ask this, is in the law, Ms. Dedman, does it say since the deadline for applying is May first, so everybody has to get it in by that day? So if somebody got it in April first and somebody April second, would it not make more sense that all the applicants would come in and then you do a lottery, as opposed to, because everybody met the deadline?
Unfortunately, the law does not make provision for a lottery. It makes provision for the date to be received and the date for the district to reply, but it does not provide for a lottery of any sort.
And it also doesn't say the earliest, so somebody could say, I want, I'm going to have a kindergartner next year, I'm going to put my application in September one, so I'm sure I'm on the front end. Okay, so it's date received, not lottery, thank you. And the law says that?
So in your board packet, you've got a copy of the law toward the back, I'm looking here at six dash eighteen dash nineteen oh five.
Okay.
It provides that the item must be postmarked no later than May first of that year, and then it says, the district upon receipt of the application places a date and timestamp. The district is to review and make a determination in the order in which it was received by the non-resident district.
That's what I need to know, thank you.
If the state votes to approve that, what would your next process be for your, to include them into your school?
They would actually be leaving our school.
Okay, right, okay, go ahead, I got you, okay.
So Washtata is not rejecting except that you notified them you had you reached your, you haven't reached your receiving number?
Right. That's... And...
I know pre-K isn't included in the cutoff, would you have room for their son if they chose to do that in the pre-K?
I don't, I can't speak for that. The pre-K program, ours, is actually run by the Dawson Co-op, as is Washtata's, I believe. Both pre-Ks are actually run through the Dawson Co-op, those do not run through our districts.
So if a child was to leave your district, which would open up a slot, is there a family that could move in then, or once you've set that three percent beginning of the year, that's it, there's no more additional people in outside the district coming in?
If they moved into the district, they could obviously still, but in terms of, under the school choice law, no ma'am, that is the cap.
No, once the deadline's it, that's okay.
I have comments, I guess. This is my area, I mean, this is where I live, and so I'm very familiar with, and I understand from the Malvern School District why there is a three percent cap, because you have to plan for the next school year, you have to hire teachers, you have to make, school starts Monday, and so you have to have, and if the three percent cap is there for a reason, so the school district can plan for the year and be ready for the students that they do have, and, you know, by my count, you had forty-five that were denied, and so, you know, and I understand the parents' reasoning, and I have great sympathy for them, but the way it reads, if, you know, if you let one leave for a good reason, then you're going to have to let the other forty-four, the way I feel about it. And so, you know, I really think that, you know, the laws that we are constrained by are clear, and I, you know, I have sympathy for you as a district, but I also have sympathy for the parents, you know, it's a hard thing, but, you know, when legislatures put that three percent cap in there, I think they were thinking of the district to be able to make plans, and so...
And you're very familiar with this, but we are, and I'd say we're one of the only places in the world where we have six school districts within a stone's throw of each other, which, you know, adds a whole nother element, as opposed to there being, you know, two districts, there are six districts that, you know, encompass us, and it's not a very long drive in any direction to get to those six districts.
Yeah, and I could see where it would be a nightmare planning on your part if, you know, there wasn't, you know, some sort of a reasoning to take care of it, and so, you know, I understand the reason for the three percent cap, you know, it's a hard thing for parents, and I, all of you know I'm a big proponent of school choice, I think it's a great thing, but, you know, we have to do what the law says, so...
So back on another pre-K question, so just for clarity, the program is administered by the Co-op, but there are different sites in different communities?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, so I guess that's really, it's the main entity that does all of the administrative work, not the site, it is at your school, right?
Yes, sir, it is at our, it is our school, but Dawson is the one that...
Administration.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Any additional questions or comments on this side? Anything else on this side? All right, we, procedurally, we're good?
Yes, procedurally, we would need a motion to accept or deny the application, the appeal.
All right, so proper motion is?
That's true, the party may, at the option of the board, the board is allowed to grant another five minutes for rebuttal at the board's discretion.
Sure, of course, of course you get a closing comment.
Yeah, just one point of clarification after hearing Mr. Roberts, we were never told it was a first come, first served basis on the application, only, it's not on the application that it's first come, first served, there's only a deadline, and so we possibly could have submitted and been one of those if we had had that...
And the inner of the idea call, and I spoke to Mr. Roberts, and I asked if it was a first come, first served basis, and I was told no.
So there's some confusion there in terms of what's actually on the app, what's being communicated to the parents and what's being said here.
What's the three percent? Why didn't we get chosen and others?
It's a way to actually, he says it's very confusing, is there not an actual way to time the date stamp, who should have been, those, he knew we weren't next, but he didn't know where we were that senior, so what could be...
I understand you said something about race and other things that are in the consideration under the transfer out of the district, but to me, it doesn't matter what race you are, if you're leaving a failing school district, you should be able to do it.
We appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
So would you like to speak to the time and date stamp issue?
I did have the conversation with the parents, there must have been a misunderstanding there, I, obviously, with, you know, in your instance, I keep telling you it's exactly forty-five, but I had this similar conversation with a couple of parents each year, and I do try to explain that it is a, you know, in order, but it's very difficult to explain, you know, how that order works in terms of siblings getting preference and those who are rejected the year before, becomes a difficult burden. When we get involved with someone from Garland County, it's even a stepped-up version of another difficulty, because that's a whole nother play, and we're only twenty minutes from Garland County, so it's another, you know, and I apologize for any confusion with that, but no, the way we do it, you know, obviously, it's the straight line, we don't accept or reject other than the order we receive.
You did date, and you did put a date and timestamp on all of them?
Everyone we receive.
Okay.
Okay, does the three percent apply to legal transfers?
No, ma'am.
So if it doesn't, would their next step, if we say yes, three percent is three percent, do, could they come to the board, the Malvern Board, and ask for a legal transfer, and then your board would say yes or no?
That is an option for any student.
Okay.
And can you tell us, what's the earliest you can submit an application for the next school year, so for the nineteen, twenty school year?
It's always been my opinion that that law is quite vague, I've always interpreted that you could submit that once the next school year started in September, but I don't have the law in front of me, but I've never read that to be a clear-cut answer there.
Okay.
Ms. Dedman, do you want?
The law provides only that it has to be postmarked no later than May first, it doesn't actually say how soon, it's just that the district cutoff to respond is by July first, so I, it's silent as to when, but thereafter.
Ms. Dedman, could you come back for a second? Okay, I'm looking in the packet, and I'm just trying to understand for my clarification, in the packet you included a copy of the application, and there's not a page, not really a page number, but it's right before the divider for response, but, so this goes, so the timestamp there is when received by the non-resident district?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay, and then underneath it's, where it says, "Application Accepted/Rejected", what's, what does that mean? Where there's a check there that says, "Accepted" and then...
That is by the non-resident district, in terms of they're accepting the school choice transfer into their district, because they do have the option to reject based upon capacity or capacity and that kind of thing.
Okay, so then the only thing then that Malvern would respond with in this case would be a letter or some notification back to Washtata that says, "We've met our cap, so you don't have anything to do with this form as the resident district."
All we do is we receive it and we date stamp when we receive it, and this actually came from Washtata, is why it doesn't have our date stamp on there, I was actually on vacation the week, I think that you emailed us, and then it, once received from us, I offered to send our copy with our date stamp when we received as well, and we decided that wasn't necessary.
So which date stamp is the...
It gets date stamped twice, it gets date stamped once when the non-resident district receives it, and it gets date stamped a second time when the resident.
But which one applies to the parents, the question the parents just raised, which one applies?
Under section nineteen oh five, it says, "The non-resident district receives the application and places the date and timestamp, and the non-resident district reviews and makes the determination on each application in the order in which they were received." It says, "Before accepting or rejecting an application, the district, the non-resident district, is supposed to determine whether one of the limitations under nineteen oh six applies." That next section does contain the three percent cap, so the non-resident district is supposed to determine whether one of these limitations in that following section applies before they accept or reject an application. Of course, in order to find out whether the other district had met their three percent cap, they would have to communicate that to the other district to have them respond.
Okay, and so y'all are getting applications from multiple districts, you talked about how, you know, you got several districts right there on top of each other, so then y'all rank them in your, with your date stamp or the date stamp of the resident, of the non-resident districts?
With our date stamp.
With your date stamp?
Which was how we were, in fact, the first year I was here, I called you guys to ask how to do it, and I was told to rank them by the order we received them.
So they might have gotten theirs in to him, some other superintendent got them all over to you, he got his over a little later, I'm not saying that you did, he got his over later, so they may have gotten their application in before somebody else did, but they got, because he was dragging his feet, you know?
It would have been that Poehn superintendent that would have been dragging his feet, right?
I could tell you with this specific question, and having six districts, they almost either all fax us the day they receive them, or they mail them the next day, and this one...
So they're not waiting till they get all of them in and then sending them over in a batch, okay? Well, you know, I mean, that helps, because if we have one slow superintendent and the other one that's speedy, we don't want to penalize the child and the parent as a result.
And the reason I bring it up, it's just probably for our, we need to review that because it's not clear, and it's certainly not clear to parents, I mean, I would admit after looking at this, and I thought I...
It's very difficult for, from a parent's standpoint to...
Yeah, I thought we had a lot of that stuff straightened out years ago, but obviously we don't, so, okay.
All right, are there any other comments or questions? Then I think everybody's clear on the facts, and I would entertain a motion at any point, either to approve or deny the appeal.
Okay, you're looking at me, so I guess I will, and I hate, you know, I hate it so much, but I move to deny the appeal.
Second. Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Chambers. Let's do a roll call on this.
Can we have a discussion?
Yeah.
I think I understand the three percent. And I've been an administrator, so I understand the school business. But I think that, based on what the Commissioner was saying, since he, in fact, was in the legislature when this was passed, and the fact that if it still has questions among us, then I can imagine how many questions the parents would have had. So, I will likely vote against the motion, just because I don't think we should have things that put the parent and the child at a disadvantage, because we can't get our stuff clear. So, please understand my position. But I do understand the three percent limit, and I do understand three percent is three percent.
Dr. Moore?
Just along the lines of discussion, want to bring in the fact that race cannot be included. And so, that should not have even been made mention in this conversation.
Commissioner, is there anything, based on what she was mentioning, for clarification moving forward, that we would be able to...I mean...
I don't think anything that's relevant for your consideration of the Board at this time. I think it's just a review that needs to take place for future legislative action.
All right. Everybody's clear on the motion. The motion is to deny the appeal, so we'll do a roll call.
Okay. Ms. Zook?
No.
Dr. Hill?
No.
Mr. Williamson?
No.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. McFetridge?
No.
Dr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
I'll vote yes on this.
Okay, so, we have five noes, three yays, and a motion fails.
Okay. And so, motion is in order?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the transfer. And I do it based on the fact that this is the last day for a request, and so, I don't expect an onslaught of other parents coming in. And I usually try to err on the side of a child. And in this instance, if I'm erring, I think it's on the side of the child.
I'll second that long motion.
I would...my comment would be, there are parents and kids in between number seventy, and we don't know exactly where. And those parents did not come forward. And so, I feel, you know, I feel that adds a level of unfairness to which child does get this spot.
I do appreciate your point.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So, we'll call the roll again.
Okay. Ms. Zook?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
No.
Ms. McFetridge?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
No.
All right, five yays, two nays. Motion is adopted.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you for your care for your students. And thank you to the superintendent for your care of your district. I would...we...I think we do have...I think we do need to look at these rules to see what could be done through rulemaking in terms of clarification. I also think we need to think about, as we look at the rules, what could be done in terms of the non-resident...excuse me, the resident district, which is often the key party in these conversations. And the rules are not clear exactly. We've kind of made stuff up in some ways, in terms of how to deal with the testimony of the resident district. And I think we need to change the procedures in a way that clearly states, that demarcates the roles of those two districts, if we can.
Yeah, because I think it almost is like the non-resident is either gonna accept or reject, as opposed to the resident may be rejecting because of numbers. But I think they thought, non-resident, because they were thinking about have to hire a new teacher.
And we have seen...we do see issues like that. And so, therefore, in those cases, the non-resident district is kind of the centerpiece. In other cases, the resident district is the centerpiece. And I think we need to maybe clarify that process just a little bit for ours, our sake. I think Commissioner...
We are happy to look at that. And it's probably beyond the procedural issues. We can control the legislative issues are at play. And, you know, to their credit, Malvern has been at the center of the issue of the three percent in trying to get clarification, because they have been impacted by it. And we took a step, I think, in the last session with Senator Clark to get some solution on a narrow part of it. But obviously, just the structure of where these applications go, where the timestamps should be, where they're applicable, and how that interaction between resident and non-resident is something that we need to clarify. Because it is...it's hard for parents who have never dealt with that type of process to understand how it should work.
And maybe, since there's a session coming up between now and the next time all of this happens, if we can get the clarification and after public comment and everything, before we have to make these decisions again next August. Because if they agreed to deal with it in the session, and it passed, and maybe, then, we might have time to get the rules written, and I don't know. Legalist back there going, "Oh, my God, what we should do."
That's a pretty tight timeline for us on rules. But procedures, the point Dr. Barth you made on procedures of who speaks at which point, I think is something we can look at internally.
All right.
And my...now that I know that we...I remembered we're on the record, my crack about that Poehn superintendent, Mr. Newsom is new to the job. And Mr. Kazzar was the one that was there, and now is a Poehn of within the last little while. So, just to clarify who I was gigging at, so...
Where were we gigging, Mr. Newsom?
Safe travels to y'all, and good luck on the start of the school year. Thank you. Okay, we are now down to a series of rules to be released for public comment. And Ms. Hyatt is up first with item six, which is the data reporting rules.
Thank you. Mary Claire Hyatt for the department. And you'll have to bear with me on this one, because it is a new rule and a repeal of four rules, and they all have lengthy titles, so I apologize in advance. So, this is for the consideration for release for public comment of the proposed rule, ADE rules governing data reporting, the Arkansas Public School Computer Network and Information Systems, which is the new rule, and repeal of four rules. The ADE rules governing the issuance of local education agency numbers, rules governing the processes to ensure the quality, security, validation, and timeliness of public school data in the Arkansas Public School Computer Network, ADE rules governing the final close of public school financial records, and ADE rules governing the Arkansas Educational, Financial, Accounting, and Reporting System and annual training requirements. These four rules were combined into one more concise rule, and also, changes were made to incorporate provisions of Act seven forty-five of twenty seventeen. And we request that the new rule, as well as the four repeals, be released for public comment. Happy to answer questions.
Lots of words there. Is there a motion to release?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr...second by Mr. Williamson to release these rules for public comment. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
You're up next.
I am. On item number seven, consideration for release for public comment is the Arkansas Department of Education Special Education and Related Services, Rule Section Two, the definition section, and Section Five, which is a FAP, Section Free and Appropriate Public Education. Act eight seventy-four of twenty seventeen made changes to these two sections necessary. And additional changes in Section Two, the definition section, were made to reflect changes made by ESSA and some outdated language, some federal outdated language, as well as just really, really outdated language that wasn't necessarily just changed, so...
Okay, all right. Entertain a motion to release these rules for public comment. Second. All right.
May I ask a question?
You may.
Okay. Has...I couldn't find it unless it's two point two eight, but I'm not sure that it's clarified that if the IP calls for the services and the public school to which that student is assigned or chooses in is willing and able to provide all those services, but the parent chooses to go somewhere else, the public school is not liable to pay for where that child chooses to go. Is that correct?
Say that again. I'm sorry, I got a little bit lost.
Okay, you have an IP.
Yes.
You have an identification, you have an IP. They design the program. The public school says, "Yes, I can put that child over at Elementary A and fifth grade, and we can provide every bit of that service. We have the speech, we have the OTP, all of that stuff." And the parent says, "But I don't really want my child to go there. I want my child to go to X private school." And the district, at that point, is not obligated to pay for the parent's choice if they are providing a free and appropriate public education.
Right, so that might be a little bit more of a complicated answer. But I think that just is, if you're moving to a private school, then that private school wouldn't be bound to follow the IP that was written in the public school, although you could have a services plan where the district would still provide some sort of service if the type of service you were getting is the type that they provide for private or homeschool students. And it could be different if they were moving to a different public school. I mean, if they were...certainly, if they were moving to a different district through choice or something, it would be that district's responsibility to meet the needs of the child. Does that answer?
Yeah, sort of. What I was thinking about is the parent...not thinking about success scholarships or anything like that, but the parent was just hoping the school wouldn't do it. And so, because they really wanted him to go to the private school where their brother went. And so, if the public school can and is willing, and will pay for and provide every single thing the IP calls for, but the parent still chooses to go somewhere else, that doesn't obligate the resident district to pay for it. Only if it's residential, does it obligate the district to pay for it.
Right, so if the child is placed in a private school placement by the IP team, because they determine that that is where the child needs to be placed, then the district would pay for it. If it is that the parent is saying, "I just want to take my child and put them in private school," then the district isn't obligated. And if there's some sort of discrepancy, then they could, I guess, go through the dispute resolution processes for special education.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Then we have a motion by Ms. McFetridge, seconded by Ms. Chambers. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hyatt.
Thank you.
And last up, Ms. Alice Ford. And this is for a final approval of a rule.
Correct, yes. We are seeking final approval for the ADE rules governing the public school rating system. These rules were released by the Board for public comment. And then, we actually made revisions to the cut scores for each grade for the three individual grade spans, and then, put those back out for public comment after getting Governor's Office approval. And so, we are now seeking final approval of those revisions.
Any questions on this side? Any questions over here? Dr. Moore? I thought that looked like a question. Okay. All right, then if folks are ready, I will entertain a motion. Dr. Moore?
I'll move to approve and congratulate the department on the hard work, and good to see positive feedback from superintendents and y'all's changes that have been made. Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion by Dr. Moore, second by Mr. Williamson. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Wish you...we appreciate your hard work on this. Okay, Ms. Freino, do we have any public comment that has signed up?
I don't believe so. I'm gonna go and ask them.
Okay. Okay. All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Dr. Hill. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Great. We will return in the morning, nine AM. We will probably be here most of the morning, because of the combination of the reports and the work session. And so, hopefully, seeing everybody at dinner tonight.